So I think we know the reason why we're here. We've been introduced by our former president, Mr. Omoyele Shorore. And we should come here and gather and visit to the land of our people, for the movement to move that country forward. Before we get started, I'd like us to be on our feet for an opening prayer, please. Alright, I'd like to invite Dr. Babalola for a short opening prayer for us, please.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this awesome moment. We thank you because we know, you've been wondering yourself, where will we be to take control of the terrible situation in our country? As we take this step forward by faith, we pray, Father Lord, that you use this dimension that our brother, Omoyele Shorore, is representing. We pray that it will not be only the flag there of our honest expectation, but it will also be the tool that we use as a divine intervention to really make things right in Nigeria. We do not want to shed blood in Nigeria, but Father Lord, we know those who really make peaceful revolutions impossible, they themselves, they are really asking for bloodshed. But with your intervention, we know, Lord, things can be so smooth. We want things to move smoothly in our country. We want a leadership that will really galvanize the whole country. That those who presently are even sojourning abroad will not hesitate to come home to contribute to the restoration process. And as we daily preach today, Father Lord, we pray that your wisdom will take control and that, Lord, it will be a very useful interaction today. And we thank you for our brother, he's been all over the world, jetting, traveling, everything. We pray for strength. When the time, Father, we pray that you give him divine energy to continue. So that this struggle, Father, it will not be just a physical struggle, but it will be a struggle that because you are also empowering him, he will not feel tired, he will be stronger all the time. He will feed him both nutritious, physically full, and great spiritually full. And he will remain strong to the very end. We pray for victory. In fact, we are thanking you, Lord, that he is not just here to just speak as a man, that he is not only our president in waiting, but he will be the president for you. Blessed be your mighty name, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much. Shall we have our seat? Alright. I know we already seated, but again, we have got to start off again for our lovely... First and foremost, we start with the Nigerian National Anthem. Some of us can still remember to sing it, doesn't matter how bad the country is right now. And some of us have said, "We can't sing that song again." We must sing that song again. That man belongs to us, is our Father in heaven. It does not matter how hard it is, let that song bring joy back to us again. Shall we rise and sing the National Anthem? And after that, you may stand while we sing the Australian National Anthem as well. We take off the Nigerian National Anthem. We'll switch over to the Australian National Anthem, please remain standing. Thank you very much. Put your hands together for yourself. I always have the National Anthem in the award, and together we sing all of you. Yeah, just to see how you guys flowed and sang that song, it feels that there's still hope. Yes, much hope. Generally, we... Look. This event, we don't mean to separate people by way of high table and all that, but I think I still have one that is there, it's not for me, because I have the master ceremony today, so I'm not sitting there. But I'm just going to call anyone, and that'll be... I don't finish that, it's... Just go and take it. That's the president to be. So this is going to be your sermon here. And you can just show this when you get over the walking stick, and show your children that. And that's what I'm doing, sir. Thank you. I think you connect with me, which is really good. We want ladies in the house, so that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to integrate now and make sure we cultivate and integrate ladies in the house. The way your vocal presence is growing down with what happened. Can you stand up and go and take your position there, please? Stand up. Yes. Put your hands together for her. You know, I don't have to pick on her name. I know I will call this back, but it's okay. Thank you. It's good to have a lady right there, and then so that they know we are integrating. I just saw on the post on the TV recently, the Ethiopian president, Ethiopian prime minister, has just recently gone and checked all the ministry cabinet, 50% women, which is really what we need. But checked Nigeria, all the ministers we have there, about three women, the rest are men. That's why when it is fight in the house, you see the women take off. How can three women with work against those men with their mothers? So we need this, and those are the things we want to take back. We want to take equality back. Put your hands together for yourself. No more discrimination, there should be equality in this city. Things to run through quickly. I'd like us to just rise to honor those who have lost their lives in Nigeria. People are dying, just you know, there's still killings in Nigeria happening right now in some part of Nigeria. Some are dying for a purpose, for a cause. For some of us who are privileged and opportunity to be in a place like this, those are our people, we should carry them along. I want us to stand on our feet and just one minute of silence for people who have lost their lives in Nigeria, all over the world, fighting for justice, for a cause. And most especially for three members of AAC who were traveling from a meeting in Delta State and lost their life, and then went running to a river. And Pastor Jones, Mr. Idris, and Mr. Ernest. They're all Delta State people, and they lost their lives. And this for a cause, for a nation. Shall we bow our head for one minute, please? Thank you very much, maybe I can just so rest in perfect peace, you can have your seat now. Alright, again, I just want to acknowledge people sitting here today and those who did not make the time to come out here for the support. So far, the journey has just begun. We are in a race. Please, don't give up here. Talk to your friends, your family, to vote wisely. Because me, I tell them from my videos that the soup is sour in the Tawia. But we need to add something to something, that's why we put water to yesterday's soup. For these guys, they are old carbo's, they need to move. Please, there are people amongst us here today who made it possible for this event to happen. And we're not just going to make... So where is he? He flew, he's been flying around the world, both in Nigeria and outside Nigeria, and he's working tirelessly to make sure he reach out to everyone. But again, there are other people, stakeholders, and then the followers, who are also making it possible for him to achieve this dream. With that, I'd like to just mention some people in the house. If your name was not mentioned, it doesn't mean that we don't recognize you. It doesn't mean that you're not part of us. But the fact that you are sitting here, you are here to fight a cause. And we really appreciate you. But I just wanted to say, few people who have made it possible for this event to happen, they are one of the stakeholders, I just want to mention their name quickly. And volunteers too, who also, you know, took their time to decorate this place, to make sure all the foodstuffs are ready, the PA system, to make sure that, you know, when we do task giving in church, after task giving, you do task chopping. So which means there's going to be something flowing through our mouth. All these things have come out of our people's personal pocket. And that is not easy for you to dip hand into your pocket and bring up to grace this event. May the Lord continue to refill your pocket in Jesus' name. I would like to call on people, and they are here, some of us are also here because they go work. The stakeholders first, I have here, Ajinu, Gwamba, Benga Ojomo, myself Wesley, Frank Vademusi, Professor Tade, Engineer Angos, Chidi Barry, Halima, Maduka, Dr. Deli, Babalola himself, Professor Benes, Shulari, from Joy James, Nogadi Jo, Perry, Ralph Peters, Richard Amodu, Pastor Stanford, and Tommy Adebayo. These guys have been hiding behind the closet, working tirelessly to make sure we are here gathered this afternoon. Put your hands together for these people, for their time. And now, I want to put you reference... Oh, sorry, I forgot to mention, and they came over the second page. Festus Iyora, Kazim, Dauda, and Mr. Paul. These are all part of the stakeholders, they were just hiding on my second page, I didn't say that, I apologize. The volunteers who made it possible for us to be having this moment. Then other people than Mrs. Shilon, Pat, Mrs. Abibohe, Halima, Edith, Kova, Ogenchi, Esther O, Yinka O, Yeti O. When I was ending all these schools, I said, "This is a family?" Families are theirs. But that's good, I can see all the O's coming out. O is a very universal word group, they do it very well, so that's good. Mrs. Esther Foss and Uyinka Ayuk. Put your hands together for this love of the people. And they have taken time to make sure we are getting enough of our time today. And then again, I just want to put you reference the overseas supporters you have as well, Mr. Omoyele Shorore. These are the ones we have in front, but there are people who are strongly behind the movement. Inasmuch as I am one of these people in a platform, I also belong to other platforms in those states and other states. And we will do, you know, brainstorm and say a lot of things. These guys, I just want to quickly mention. Usainde Wobere, the Obama Leo of UK, Birmingham, that guy is strongly behind you. Igudaro, aka Darrow, you probably would have met these people. As I mentioned, the name, it rings a bell. David Singh, Gorilla, aka Ocean, Dr. Greve, Omo Nigeria. Joy Omorokwe, Nigeria ASAP, not chapter. I can see the ladies highly involved, the ladies are taking it back. And of course, the list goes on for the people, not of people that you've got. And to all the AAC party members and supporters, we say thank you for your time and for the support for these platforms. I want to quickly introduce this man to you. And I kind of wrote something a little bit about him, which I put together. But if certain things, if they're wrong, please, we will readjust it. We are, we readjust it, but I have to put this together quickly, but Omoyele Shorore. When you go on social media, you will hear all sorts of stories about this guy. Some people will say good about him, some people will say this guy is radical. How are we going to have a mafia that will beat him down? But I always tell people, look back to history, because we think we've lost our history. We're not going back to history. I looked at one post a few days ago on social media, and I saw Omoyele Shorore standing behind MKO Abiola, and he was very young. And I said, "Wow." Which means this guy has been fighting for a cause for nearly 30 years. Nigeria is 58. This guy has been fighting for a movement for 30 years, minus 30 from 58. How many have you got left? That is not rocket science, which means we only got two years left. For someone to still be fighting consistently, persistently, unconsciously, don't you guys think that that's a cause? I think it's a matter of the record. And I wrote a little paragraph about this guy. And I said, "What kind of a man is this guy? What can a man do? One man that can motivate, inspire, and give his people a reason to hope and believe in their country once again." Who is this man? It's no other person than Omoyele Shorore. Mr. Shorore is an indigenous of Ebondo State in southwest Nigeria. He was born February 16, 1971, in Niger Delta region of the country where he was also raised. He studied geography and regional planning at the University of Lagos and hold a master degree in public administration from Columbia University. He teaches modern African history at the City University of New York and post-colonial African history at the School of Art, New York. A human rights activist, pro-democracy campaigner, and of course, you know, he's the founder of an online newspaper called Sahara Reporters. Please help me stand up. Make a stand-up ovation as I introduce to you this very lovely man. The presidential candidate for African Action Congress, come 2019 Nigeria Presidential Elections, Mr. Omoyele Shorore. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that very nice introduction. Thank you, Australia. Thank you, people of the city of Perth, for bringing me over here. Thank you, the organizers of today's event. I should say that when I was studying geography and planning at the University of Lagos, I never thought that one day I would end up doing the excursion I refused to do when I was in university, which was to come to Australia. When our professor was teaching us about Australia, they said it's the end of the war, so don't go there. And I got to tell you that coming here is truly the end of the war. How did I find out? I got to Australia on the map and Emirates aircrafts, and thought we had arrived. It took another five hours to get to Brisbane. I said, "You know, this is going to be the true end of the war." But I've had so much love and support since I arrived here, it makes me feel it's the beginning of the war. And I thank you so much for making it happen. One of the things that I saw when I got here is how important it is that, you know, we develop our country. I came here, and every city I've been, Brisbane, Melbourne, and Sydney, as I said totally, the place was designed, it fell from the sky. You wouldn't even think that this place was developed by human beings. Reason is that that is what we are made to feel at home, that's impossible to do anything. It's impossible to make roads, it's impossible to have hospitals that are working, it's impossible to have housing system for the poor, it's impossible for us to have education. But something has been wrong with Nigeria, because today is Sunday. You know, I'm not particularly a religious person, I should say, but I've read the story of Jacob and Issa, right? And it tells me what happened to Nigerians. It was that you all know about how Jacob and Issa, Issa lost his birthright to Jacob. And when we talk that story in the Bible, we always felt that Issa, I mean Jacob was some sort of a schemer, right? He was this guy who, you know, made his brother lose his birthright, and somehow you hate Jacob, somehow you have pity for Issa. And was in the case of Nigeria, there's a parallel as well. And the problem for me is that, that's still incomplete until you look at the transaction. The problem was that there was an offer made to Issa by Jacob to sell his birthrights, and he accepted it and took the price and walked away. It is same thing that I think happened to Nigeria. There was an offer made to us to popularize us. There's an offer made to us to oppress us. There's an offer made to us to drive us out of the country to the poorest lands around the world, and we accepted it. I don't know how we accepted it, but the result is that if we didn't accept it, we could have taken back our birthrights for the last 58 years, which is what we are trying to do now, and we must make it happen. I've told you that story not because it makes a sense, but because it's the driving force today behind the reason I'm standing in front of you. That for the last 30 years, as the LC introduced, I have been fighting very hard to take my own birthright back in Nigeria. It was to the extent that when I found myself in the US for 19 years, I spent 19 years in the US between 1999 and last year, or this year, I lived in the US. And I lived comfortably like most of you did, you know, I had kids there, got married. But I discovered something that, you know, that birthright of yours, you cannot regain it back from another man's land. And there's no body who's going to give you your birthright, whether they call it naturalization, whether they give you an employment check, or even offer you a job, they give you free education. There is just nothing like being in your own space, living in your own country, and being happy in your own country. If anybody were to ask you in this room, where you would rather be with the same facilities you have here, I think the answer would be totally Nigeria. Where would you rather be with electricity? Where would you rather be with free education, health? Where would you rather be with the kind of infrastructure I've seen in Australia? The answer would be Nigeria, because it's no how well you have cheated up here that it can feel like home, because that's where you come from. So I brought home to you, or brought from home to you, greetings from our people, I've been in Nigeria now for eight months, eight months. Leading a movement that I was taking back. And about two months ago, we registered a political party known as the African Action Congress. And I became the presidential candidate of that party less than a month ago. And I foretold I've been traveling around Nigeria, having done artists in Nigeria, several cities. But I've also been under a lot of pressure to visit and meet with Nigerians all over the world. So over 100 events already gone. And the conclusion I've come in and walked around with is that Nigerians are looking for a country that they can call their own. Even for Nigerians who don't plan to go home, they want a Nigeria that is functioning. Even for Nigerians who are born outside of Nigeria, like our kids who are here, they are always talking about Nigeria, you know. But sadly, the only information most of them have about Nigeria is sad news that is constantly coming out of Nigeria. The sad news you are hearing from Nigeria for those of you who are here is not a place for sad news, it's deliberate. Nigeria has been designed by Nigerian leaders to be a place from where only sad news can come out. When you look at the mathematics, you look at the geography, you look at the administrative politics of Nigeria, the social, cultural, and traditional politics of Nigeria, only one result can come out of it: sad news. If you look at the nature and character of Nigerian leaders, the only outcome of their leadership is sad news. Because we are saddened and bothered with very greedy and wicked individuals, human beings, sadly. And speaking like this on a Sunday in front of a lot of kids, I feel a little bad. Because most of them are looking for hope and inspiration that, you know, this country will become a better place for them. Yes, that hope and inspiration is right in front of you today. We are determined to change the narrative of the stories that are coming out of Nigeria. But we cannot do that, ladies and gentlemen, without changing the objective conditions on the ground, without changing the leadership in Nigeria. And it is the reason why I'm here in Australia. My Nigerian time is about 10 past 8 to 11 past 8. Australia is, what time is it in Perth? About 8:30 in Brisbane, probably like 5:00 PM. It's... I don't know, my body's full right now, I don't know where I am. You know, I know where I'm, Nigeria, Perth, Brisbane, Sydney, where I'm born. But we have to do this. And I'm glad that all of you are sitting down here today, willing to engage and interact about the best way forward for Nigeria. So I will be very glad to take a lot of questions and suggestions, a lot of comments about what's going on in Nigeria. Typically, what I do is to give a long talk, talk about how bad things are. But I know that most of you already know the story, and there's no point repeating it to you. We repeat it to ourselves all the time. Everywhere you sit between Nigerians, gather together, having any conversation, it's about how bad things are in Nigeria, and talking about Boko Haram, talking about Boko Muhari, the article, the nation, or passengers, or the people who destroy Nigeria. But we can take back Nigeria, we can make Nigeria work, we can make Nigeria be better than even Australia. Reason I say so is that when Australia was built, or admitted like this, a long time ago, technology is such that if we have the right kind of leaders in Nigeria today, we can bring in new things that will totally just turn Nigeria around in such a way that even people in all these western countries where we run to to become citizens and go on exile, whichever way we call it, will be jealous. They will be very, very jealous of what has happened in Nigeria. They will be surprised at what has happened in Nigeria. And the people that can make it happen are those of us who are sitting in this room today. Glad, and also people at home who are also braving it. But the sad part about home is that most people in Nigeria, who are still in Nigeria, they are just, they are trapped, they are waiting to leave. That's true, that is my experience in the last eight months in Nigeria. If somebody were to go to Nigeria today and say, "I'm wishing this ass for anybody who wants to leave Nigeria, to go to Australia, we are the fifth of them," the US, 70% of Nigerians will leave Nigeria the same day. I'm telling you, that's how bad things are. 30% of people that have been left are people who are probably unable to stand, walk to the airport, or go to the port. The rest of Nigerians are just waiting to... In fact, senators will be the first soon to leave. Obolos will be struggling to leave with sirens in the country. They don't believe in a country, they made a country to become a country in which no human being wants to live in. So except those who are trapped, any place. But this could change, this will change. And why and how it will change is the reason I'm here today. We have seen the way the rest of the world is working. In fact, most of us here, sitting... In fact, most of us here, sitting, are the most helping other places around the world to function. We are the engineers designing and building roads and houses, infrastructure for Australia. I've met Nigerians before who are helping to shoot rockets into the space. Met a Nigerian who was one of the first who designed the VASMA TV. There's a Nigerian in the U S who can take a baby out of the womb, fix the baby to the back and the baby will be on health. I heard there's also a similar doctor here in Australia, Nigerian doctor, who has such marvelous capability. But if you, if they head to Nigeria tomorrow, they would not hit the airport without being kidnapped. If they make it to where they want to do it, the person that is supposed to receive them will tell them, we don't need you here. If you bring a new idea, so take the idea from here and ask it to get away from them, if you keep coming back, they'll watch you. The place is so emasculating that there's almost no space, ladies and gentlemen, to do good in Nigeria anymore. And that is why there's the urgency of now. Urgency of why this intervention we're talking about must happen and why all of you, regardless of whatever you can do to support, must intervene at this time. If you have financial support, it's great, but moral support is very important. In fact, sanctions, I'm recommending sanctions, I'm recommending as I started, that people even have watched the sanction before at home, that if they don't vote for the right leader at this time, then there's no more Western Union transfer. Somehow, we have been encouraging the listeners at home by sending money at the slightest provocation. Anybody can make a story of you, send money to them. Somebody will ask you, um, you know, I'm sick, you keep sending money. When you get to Nigeria, discover this building a house for himself. And they will refuse, however, to do anything about the situation that could make them stop waiting for Western Union from abroad. So those of you who are sitting here today are the biggest investors in Nigeria. You are the foreign investors, real foreign investors. You are bringing in over fifty billion dollars into Nigeria every year. That is officially, if you are sending through World Records, Western Union recorded. But knowing Nigerians, when you want to send real money, you hide it inside the container. And to go to Nigeria for you, that's where money is, or you go to the airport or somewhere to carry it for you. So if you add the way we send money unofficially, uh, the unorthodox way, you're probably sending some hundred billion dollars. There's no country in the world, in the West, that is giving foreign aid of a hundred billion naira to any country. In fact, the entire aid given to the continent of Africa is not up to what we sent to Nigeria through, uh, the money transfer. So you must start sanctioning people at home. We started preaching by asking that you should force them somehow to get PVC, that is permanent bodaska. That before I sent you my next chance of Western Union, I want to say a copy of it by WhatsApp. A lot of people did it, they worked, I'm telling you. It sounds funny to you, but since we've been preaching it, it's worked. We found people as we're traveling in Nigeria, I said, if it's not for you, I wouldn't have got PVC. And I go down to Australia and ask them to get PVC. And now we're hearing from people, they say, they say if I don't vote for you, they don't go send me money again. It's the way we have to take the bull by the horn, ladies and gentlemen. Because that country could be one of the best countries in the world. The whole world will be looking up to Nigeria in a matter of four years from now. But the whole world could be running away from Nigeria in a matter of two years from now. What is two years from now? If two of the major candidates or the two major political parties win the election next year, one of them will likely put Nigeria on eBay or Alibaba. I'm serious, that's not funny. The other one will dissolve Nigeria in acid, that's Muhari. These two guys have no plans for Nigeria. One of them, Artikoo, spent twenty billion dollars in Portugal to purchase the candidacy of the P D P. What do you think he will do when he becomes president? It's not only to pack his money. One person probably has allocated over a billion dollars to spend in election article. And this is the same article that had the vice president twice in Nigeria, eight years, Starbuck. They are doing a custom officer, there is no way of explaining how he made his money. But we know how he made his money, there's a record of how he made his money through collection of bribery, you know, from Siemens and other companies in the archives of the U S government website, if you Google it today. The next person is our lifeless ancestor, Muhari. When I say ancestor, I really mean it. Muhari is official since six years old. He even goes back to the hospital in London next year and might add another one year. Anytime you see his daughter, you add one more year. But the reality is, younger sister is eighty-two years old. Yes, Nigeria, this is not, this is not a lie, we are hearing from the source. You know, Nigeria is fifty-eight years old. The leader of Nigeria is fifty-eight years old. I mean, what kind of country are we running? These people, we are not against them, by the way, because they are old. We are against them because of the age of their ideas. They have nothing to offer us anymore. The best they can offer Nigeria is what Nigeria is today. A broken country without infrastructure, a broken country without hospitals, a broken country without roads, a broken country without housing, and all of the good things you take for granted over here. Nigeria in two thousand and eighteen is still celebrating the flickering of lights, what they call off N E P A in Nigeria, that is, you get electricity turned on accidentally. In Nigeria, the office of the electrical company that is known as N E P A, for the top eight year now, uh, P S A means power has changed and the problem has changed then. They use generator to power their office. Yes, we, we told it before when we went to the office and we saw them uploading a generator at N E P A office to power their office. Those are the points of contradictions that has been deadly in our country, ladies and gentlemen. And if we then decide, which is simple, to change the situation through the elections that are coming in next year, February sixteen decides is the presidential election. To vote for a young person that has got integrity, a young person that has got exposure, a young person that has got education, a young person that has got capacity and stamina, uh, you will find Nigeria to be a different place in less than twenty-five years. Why did I say so? Egypt just added over thirty-four thousand megawatts of electricity to their national grid a few days ago. You guys probably heard about it. They built it in twenty-five years. And it's a mixture of gas, solar, biogas, biofuels, biomass, you know, renewable energy and also fossil fuel, right? China built in nine years the longest bridge ever to be built by human beings between Hong Kong and mainland China. In the same last nine years that we couldn't figure out how to sign a contract, hear me, to conclude the refurbishment of the Lagos-Ebadon Expressway. Just to sign the contract, it took nine years. By the way, they have been refurbishing it for the past twenty-something years that I know of personally. They started refurbishing Lagos-Ebadon Expressway, which is one-twenty kilometers since before I left Nigeria in nineteen ninety-nine. I went back there in two thousand and eighteen. So eighteen, nineteen, eighteen years after, same old story. The other day, for those of you followers on Facebook, I was trapped on that road within the speed of two kilometers for six hours. Because it's the only road that leads out of Lagos and permanently under reconstruction, not even construction now, right? I came here and everywhere I was driven by those of you who have been assisting my travel here, it's always about construction, everybody will point to me, this neighborhood used to be bushed last two years, now it's full of houses. And I was asking, these houses, are there any houses for rich people? No, what are you talking about, rich people, these are council workers, regular people. In Nigeria, the kind of houses you live here, I see, Nigeria is only rich people that can afford to live in those spaces. But it's because the country, a nation here, is a national state that cares for its people. And it's not as if you even have like some sound political system. I hear you change your prime minister like Master Captain, you have more. Maybe while we're here, you change the prime minister. You know, but that would change the equation, the value chain to a different level. Because you are constantly never satisfied with the leadership. And you keep changing and asking for changes. You know, even those of you who are not even Australians, you're asking to change the prime minister of Australia. Because those of us who are Nigerians, we can't change our leaders in fifty-eight years. It's the same for Muhari of nineteen eighty-three, that's still the president of Nigeria in two thousand and eighteen. And they will then have the audacity and the temerity to be asking young people for experience. Where would you get experience? When they refuse to leave power. You have to get experience by working. When your father refuses to let you leave the house, how can you have experience to become the father? If your father refuses to allow you marry, how can you become a father to older children? So it's horrible, but we can change it and we can do it. And those of us who can do it have made ourselves available. I am one of the seventy-nine candidates that's running for yes, if I ask you, there are seventy-nine candidates. Everybody that had the possibility of running for office. You know, the reason why there are seventy-nine candidates is that Muhari made the presidency so cheap. Everybody thought it was president of Nigeria. Yes, so, and you can't blame them. If the president doesn't have Y E C certificate, so anybody who had the ability to change it will not apply to be president of Nigeria. Even now, as of yesterday, they still couldn't submit his, right? They said they speak with the military. You are the commander-in-chief of the air forces, your results is with the air forces. Why should you write it in I N E C form that you don't know where your results are? Just tell the air forces to release your results to I N E C. But truth is that Muhari did not go to, did not do Y E C. Now you can tell him from his demeanor, you can tell him from the way he talks, that he's not educated. There's no doubt about that. Even one of the traditional rulers in the north, the Emir Sannusi, said it today, that it's time for Nigerians to start voting for educated people. And I have no doubt that the Emir should fire him to Muhari. Yes, but he was spuck it out between the experts. That's if they don't throw him before the election. Anyways, this is why we are, I, I, I'm very lax today. I don't want to, you know, make any big speeches. I want also to have an interactive, uh, session together. This is my last city in, uh, in Australia. Hopefully after tonight, I'll get the chance to leave. Uh, this is a very huge country of yours. Head, Australia is actually four times the size of Nigeria, four times, six. Well, everywhere you go in Australia, there's probably a link in first to Brisbane. Can you drive from here to Brisbane? Of course you can, right? Yeah, you cannot drive from Lagos to Abelputa. I'm not making it up, you can start the journey, it's possible that when you get there. When you can drive from here for two weeks on the road, you will get to Brisbane. You cannot get to Abelputa from Lagos in a day. That's if you are lucky, you make it second day. So please, uh, thank you for coming and you, 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 you amazing people that you moved after leaving Nigeria behind. Most of you, when you left Nigeria, you swore that you'd never have anything to go in Nigeria. Yes, everybody has got his story as to the reason they left Nigeria. And most of you are sitting here, also some of you left Nigeria thinking I'll be back in two weeks. And your two weeks became twenty-seven years, seven and a half years. But regardless, you have not left Nigeria behind, you know. Nigeria is also a very interesting part of us, right? No matter how you leave Nigeria, Nigeria doesn't leave you. It's like following you around, you know, wherever you go. So thank you so much. Uh, again, I want to thank the organizers, not the organizers of, uh, tonight's event only, but the organizers of all the events that have attended right here in Australia, from Brisbane to Melbourne and Sydney yesterday. I am the only or the first presidential candidate in Nigeria to come looking for the presidency of Nigeria in Australia first. In fact, you can count the number of Nigerian presidents who have never been to Australia. And how many times they've been to Australia, probably no more than ten in the history of Nigeria. So I thank myself very bravely and lucky to be in your midst. And I am looking forward to an interactive session this afternoon uh, to discuss how next year, uh, we can start taking Nigeria in a different direction where I am personally sworn in as the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you. Put your hands together one more time for Shoray. When I say Shoray, say, take it back, Shoray. Shoray. We are taking that country back. For some of us who also go to Nigeria all the time, it saddens you. What you see here is compare, your brain, just go back like in time to Australia and see, you try to compare. It messes up with your head. I live, my, for my place, my house is bringing, look at police station, look at my place. It's the only place where police, vigilante will be collecting money for security. Look at police station, on the same street that I live. Opposite my house is air force base, policeman will be collecting money, vigilante will be collecting money for security. And this is a country where a police, you are asked to hold a thing. You hand over to police, policeman, you have to back them to vigilante. You go there, ask yourself, who they guarding you? For this country. I would have never gone to Nigeria, go to Nigeria, seen that, look at the meter. The meter, they are using, they are using card. The, the, the way the thing moves, it move like nest, cool like a nest egg, the way they are feeding you, look, look, and not only money, anything. The card just go there, that country. Please we need to take it back. Honestly speaking, how much will you hear? If you always stand here and begin to tell you, in fact, you don't even think to, because you know what you're saying, you heard. It's just the attitude we need with Nigerians. I can tell the people, late Tupac said, you cannot make somebody independent unless you make them grow. Grow them to become independent. And J R K, Dear Kennedy, late president Dear Kennedy, says, one ignorant votes, your one ignorant vote destroy your future and the insecurity of your nation. And that's what we're begging again, as time has come. People that are half head, they don't, they can't think. Yeah, what do you call them again, analog? I got that word from you, analog leader. Analog brain, they are not thinking digitally. Can you imagine? We're taking it back, it's just me. We're supporting this movement, doesn't matter how hard it is. Wish I smile one day, because I was playing Sodhi Okusu, late Sodhi Okusu. Few days ago, I tears flowed down my eyes, it's which way Nigeria is. Which way to go? They say, but I love my father, I want to know which way Nigeria is. Go back in time and play, I've got this, uh, Shaqliba album that they play now. All this Chris May, go back and listen to people that play music of yesteryears. People like Bella, I posted something of Bella's page on my, my account and I see what Bella said. These people, they are like prophets. What the prophesy back in the day is happening right now. But we need to change our orientation, let's change our attitude. Once we change our attitude, our orientation about things will change. Rome was not beautiful, Rome. Rwanda in history suffered the worst genocide in the world. Rwanda had the worst corruption, people were slain, eight-hundred thousand people massacred. But man, I have flown to Rwanda and rode my way to South Africa from Kenya, you will not believe.
You will not believe how Rwanda is building a nation again. You will see Rwanda that you heard of many years ago. Go and look at Rwanda, they want to be fasted, developing country in Africa right now. Because what? It's not the country that live in Brandy, it's the leader that live in Brandy. Because they are not there, we need to kick them out. Look at Ethiopia. A prime minister that went to a country, Egypt, and he said, you know what? All the people you have detained, released them. They released all the Ethiopians and put them on the same aircraft and took them back home. They're doing amazing work. Right now, my people, Shorore has spoken. But that's not the end, it's just the beginning. It's just the icing on the cake. And that's the reason why we are here today, interaction. We want to have questions and answering now. Are you, have you prepared your question? I would got it back before in the middle already. And I'll be passing this one to Mr. Shorore. Please, let us be conscious about no randomness, we are not, we are all gentlemen and ladies, we are all kind, nice and easy. Any question you have prepared, it is time to ask this question. Let our children hear, so that when they grow up, they can start to read and learn from it. It's questioning time, my people. I like to ask anyone, if you have any question, raise up your hand. And we will make your way. First question, please, Professor Shorore, put your hands together of thank you.
You are welcome to Western Australia. My name is Ebenezer Afumie Shorore. I'm not asking a question. I'm just going to, like, offer an insight for us to discuss about. I believe the problem of our people is the mind. Zizigla said, and I quote, "If you want to destroy a man or a woman, get hold of his own mind." Once you get mind, you got everything. I observed it very, very much attention when Mr. Shorore arrived and a couple students stood behind to watch his movements and the outrides that surrounded him. I was very impressed. I compared it to an experience I had a month ago during the Australian mining down under. Where I was privileged to be president. And the former president of Nigeria by name of Asajjo arrived almost two hours late while the director of Masima was speaking. And to my utmost dismay and disappointment, the director stopped the speech. There was a pandemonium in the hall, and everybody abandoned everyone and went straight to go and profit from that. I walked to one corner and I shook my head. That is why I said, our problem should be centered on mind. I am, I'm very glad when I heard Mr. Shorore spoke about his strategy for our rural people in Nigeria. That practically answered the question of mindset. Because I called my people in Nigeria and I said, "A young man by name Shorore is coming to Western Australia." And my brother said, "Easy." I said, "Is, did you mean you don't know him?" I said, "Well, we are only for a T U anyway, so we don't know who you are talking about. We are tired of hearing." So when Shorore mentioned that create a sanction, this is a very, very powerful method. Whoever you are sending money to, tell him or her, this money is the last one coming to you if you don't show me evidence that you want to change it. God bless you for that, Mr. Shorore. When I asked my senior sister that you are a registered nurse and your sister struggled to feed your child. I said, "God is in control." I said, "You need God in your own place." My question is, what do you want to do in the coming election? We went to Chongdikova, I said, "For better or for worse." I said, "I praise myself with my torch, but that doesn't make me a moral. I have to use my brain." So, the problem is, we look at ourselves here. A person miss me said, "Oh, they are just wasting their time." Nigeria, they have already confirmed the election. Please, ladies and gentlemen, today is started on a rough road. And the outcome of that rough road is what we are enjoying today. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Put your hands together one more time for Professor Shorore. Thank you. Just recycle the card, take it back like a ticket.
All right, thank you everyone for coming around today. And thank you, Mr. Shorore. In part, it's a privilege and an honour to stand in front of you today. And although I've got questions to ask and I've got suggestions as well. But before I begin, I just want to congratulate you for one thing that you did. You know, and that was the standoff between you and the, I don't know if you still the Minister of Communications or maybe still, is it the Minister? Yes, because that is top one thing. That is one thing that really brought, you know, the consciousness of the youth. That's one thing that really brought out that confidence, you know, that gave us a glimpse of hope that we can naturally stand and face these people and tell them that, look, we are fed up, we are tired. You know, when I left the country, that was in two thousand and thirteen, I remember my experience, I was fed up. Even while going through a lot in school, you know, where you probably be in class, you're studying engineering, medicine, whatever the course is. But you're sitting in the classroom, asking yourself, of what benefit is this going to be to me? Because if we're like, you know, a nation of foreign, it's something million. And then we have people who are, you know, like, we've got more than two, three million who are reading the same course. And then we're looking out there, looking at the future, we don't have any hope of job. So the question is, you're in class, you're competing consciously with your mates and unconsciously with the number of students who are... The reason, I don't know. They say you're traveling to Australia. I said, "Yes," and I was going to study. And they said, "Oh, can I see your visa, please?" And I said, "Well, that was it there. The salt was printed A4 paper." And the guy looked at me and gave me a very funny smile. And he said, "You're not going anywhere." And I said, "Why?" He said, "It's not in your passport." And I explained to him, I said, "Look, Australia has a new technology. Australia doesn't work like that, you know." Our passport, it's the fact that, you know, there's an opportunity, I know, in, in the country, so many opportunities. We have a lot of corporas, I mean, youth corps members, who after school, they are being sent to different places, you know, different part of the country to serve. Now, over here, there's what they call medical insurance, you know, that covers everyone. You know, irrespective of where you're from, even if you're coming from the country, you're not a citizen of the country. You're expected to have some form of medical, you know, cover. A lot of youth corporas have died during my time, I mean, I've lost count, but during my time, I know that I've lost more than, close to a thousand people that I'm aware of that died during N Y C. No medical cover. The last incident that happened the last time was, a student was shot by the police. You know, she was taken to the medical center, to the hospital, and what happened? They said, "Oh, we cannot do anything except, you know, you put some deposit." You know, it's a challenge there. And I know that a lot of people are walking towards it. I had a conversation with some people, some young individuals who were planning on setting up insurance just to cover youth corps members. And when they got to the point where they're about to establish, sorry, run up now. They go to the point where they're about to establish that, what happened? They were faced with the same bureaucratic crap. So my question now is, I believe that you've got something that covers the Nigerian youth, because Nigerian youth makes up the country Nigeria. I just want to share what your idea is and what you have to cover for the youth of the country. Thank you very much.
Put your hands together one more time. Get them now. Yeah. So I will be...
Three questions.
Three questions, every three. Okay, every three, okay, so you, okay, cool. All right, please, we, we have a lot of questions and please, we try to make you very snappy. Max two minutes, straight to the point, please, and then so that we keep moving. Thank you very much. Dr. Ovavala, please.
Thank you very much. President, to leave. You are welcome to go to Australia. My contribution is very simple. Everybody wants Nigeria to be better. And we know in our mind, I'm going to use you to make it happen. So, some of us just want to share some ideas, practical ones, so that you can just, you know, run with that as well. My background is, I went to Mayflower School, so I'm a Tashanari guy. So when we are in school, that man just identified people who refer to as potential leaders. And he would sit us down and he told us that Nigeria is not really attractive, but our people are just too wasteful. And that leaders should not to suffer. Anybody is going to look for political posts to, you know, steal our money. The people should have a way of, you know, talk, making a sphere of them or something like that. They should just not be allowed to be there. Politics should be service, and everybody knows the lack of Sholani example. So what I'm trying to say here is that, for you, for instance, I could just see the evidence of that shit here. You didn't bring an impossible way. Another person to just see his lifestyle was Peter Wee. Everybody will know Peter Wee as well, what he did in the number. This man just plug leakages. He said, he would go to, every afternoon, he would splatter about three cars. Expecting to bring visitors from office. What am I bringing visitors to do? If I'm bringing visitors, I will let you know. I said, "Stop cooking." If I don't give instruction, don't even cook a file. Not talk of three cars. Do we really need all those presidential jets? We don't. So, practical way of saving money simply means we have to be extremely forgetful. So much money have been wasted in the past. If we can, the National Assembly, for instance, is just a way of wasting our money. If we can really streamline that, you know, that may we don't need to, a, a bad camera, this is legislation. We reach that down to what really is productive. People are there, the body will go there first as a service. They don't get anything at all. Just come there because your regular job is there and you come at regular time to contribute to the thing. Now, my profession, I'm a medical doctor. And the system I see here is something I think are working in Nigeria. So for primary health, the government doesn't need to go and start building structures. They can use doctors on the ground, but they have to be electronically linked to what we call Medicare care. Nigeria can design something similar. And those doctors with, are Nigerians who also are registered to see them. As long as they have those care, you know, it's a kind of health insurance, whatever. People should be able to see any doctor near their neighborhood. They are dying, at least they have that first primary care. And luckily, most doctors in Nigeria run like a mini hospitals as well. So this idea of somebody having a broken leg, it's an accident, they rush him to I K A General Hospital. And they said, "Look, if you can't pay your registration money, no doctor is going to attend to you." A lot of people die in their burrow, they're just like that. That sort of thing should never happen. And the last note is just that, the biggest resource we have in Nigeria, they are the youth. Now look at the United States, in the, in the early times, when Roosevelt took, took over from, Jeddah, I didn't know what to do in the depression. The youth were galvanized. There was no money, everything was costing money here. The man just put all the youth to construction. They put them in camps, government would feed them. They were doing all the construction, the road. All the highways in the U S now understand, that's how they all go about, the huge towns, all those. The youth used to do that. So in Nigeria, I think the most important to do is, what kind of joy are you going to do for them? Shorore was, they didn't credit that to him now, but the idea of the National Youth Service Corps was Shorore. It's not that with the students, it's what it came about. So the National Youth Service Corps, as it is today, again, is a waste. It's more of an opportunity to get youths across Nigeria to really know themselves. There's no point putting somebody in Lagos to do national service in Lagos, that depends on to apply for. So it's a way to know Nigeria, know your people, and really remove all this artificial concept of propagating them and so on. When by the time you finish your apply for, if you are not married, you might probably bring your apply for wife home. You know, you get used to the cuisine there and all that. But the point I'm trying to make there is, the youth in Nigeria now that, you know, have nothing to do. Create a job, government give them like a bar, you know, use them like soldiers. Anywhere in construction, put them there. They are sure of accommodation. Government pays them, they stipend, which can more than, you know, food, water and so together. And they are doing service, we don't need Chinese. So a lot of those people, they have left university, they have their own ideas about construction, brilliant engineers, they're all there. Let them tap those ideas and, you know, the closest is the energy thing.
Thank you very much.
So, we look to the raw hands of energy or targeting and so on. I think you're already on the right track on that one. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Um, we've got three.
Yes.
We've got three questions now, so we're going by three questions in a, in a row, like, one, two, three, and then he will nail it, and then we'll go one, two, three again. So the cards will be going around in numbers, so we're going to be going back to number one, two, three again. So, and three, four, okay, all right, okay. We, no partializing, we're going to be very partial here. Okay, all right. I will hand over the microphone to Shorore. You ready?
Yes. Honestly, the last three comments and not questions might be their suggestions that we could use.
Okay.
And some of them already, we, we are already on track regarding some suggestions. So, I just have to thank you and hope that you continue to contribute ideas to our campaign. We're going to hit the ground running big time, starting November, I think, when we start building around Nigeria. We have no doubt that we can win this. And as soon as we win this, we will still need you again to bring these dynamic ideas. What Nigeria is looking for is to stop the recycling of the same people that failed Nigeria. And bringing people with fresh ideas, just like we have mentioned here, fresh leadership. People who are, who are making things work in other places. You mentioned the issue of doctors who can treat people wherever they are. When I get sick in Nigeria, I get my treatment through telemedicine. I call my doctor in the U S, this is how I'm feeling. And what is usually my biggest issue in Nigeria is stomach flu. Because you are picking up or being, you know, in some other, and all the places, you pick stomach virus. And they tell you what to take, you find the next one, you call the doctor, I'm fine. So, a lot of Nigerian doctors have actually spoken to me who are living abroad, that they are willing to do telemedicine as far as it is possible. Just a matter of, you have a central number people can call, and, you know, they have a card, universal healthcare card. And if you call that number, and a doctor from Australia can treat you, who is a Nigerian. Or you know, you go, the call might go to the one in the U S. And if somebody cannot take care of you, they can consult among themselves and say, "Look, this is a complicated case, they have a case meeting about you." And they treat you. These are possibilities that are already existing in places like Ghana. But our media, if you bring any new ideas to them, it's as if it makes them upset. When you bring any new idea, they look at you as if you have come to assault them. And they assault them. Who are you? They're gonna tell us how to treat people in this country. Because they are living in Australia, because they are living in America, who do you think you are? Meet you and be to America before. All those kind of very petty, you know, uh, attitudes, what is destroying Nigeria. And it comes mostly with these analog brain leaders, you mean digital thinkers.
So I'll take the next three questions. Thank you, thank you very much, uh, that was being observed. I'd like to call on the card number three. Please introduce yourself, and make you very snappy, and I will be interrupting if you go beyond time. Take it back. Take it back.
I'm John, and I just have two questions. Um, I grew up in school, uh, in a private school, I finished from a private school. And, uh, I was in a situation whereby students in high school have to pay to get maths for project. Um, luckily, I was a senior, um, head boy for that private school. Uh, but we had the economics teacher who always collected money from students. I never partook in that. I never partook in that. And, but I got into serious problem with that particular teacher, actually, till I left, even though I was the head boy. Uh, what plans do you have, um, in order to incent the students, the young ones? Because those are the leaders of tomorrow, right? And that corruption mindset is already been built into them, even right from high school. So in that area, what plans do you have? Because it's not just about building more schools, you know, we need more schools, obviously. But how do you plan to tackle that, uh, situation, um, in the mindset of the student? Another one is power. Power is very, very important. And, uh, doctor was talking about the Medicare card and all that. But without power, Medicare card, it can't work. How will it work if there is no power? The card, to operate the card, those who will be making the cards. I mean, I've been following the PVC collection and all that in Nigeria. And, uh, a lot of people said they've been trying to get their PVCs for over three months, but they've not been able to get their PVC. They go there, they say, oh, they're still working on it, they're still, they're still printing it. So how do you plan to tackle that, uh, problem? Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Shoray. I've been following you up on YouTube for a while now. And it's a pleasure to see you in flesh. Uh, I won't be wasting much of our time, I just want to go straight to the point. Um, my question for you is basically, uh, how you want to... I mean, what structure do you have for the country? I'm talking of totality of the country, we have, you know, ethnicity problem. As we speak right now, Kadna is shut down, doing far off of you. How do you want to tackle Gokul Aram? How do you want to bring the country together? How do you want to put a structure in ground, I mean, on ground, to make everybody feel like this is the country that they belong to? We all love Nigeria, that's what we're talking about Nigeria today, and, um, very, very passionate about it. The very first time you started, I was telling my wife that it is a joke, but I'm beginning to believe in you now. She's the one that is actually pushing to say, yeah, she believes in Shoray. But I've been going through your YouTube and everything, I think you have strong passion for the country and, um, basically, we, we, we want to see you there, we hope it's going to happen. So that's, that's my first question. What structure do you have in ground that would kind of incorporate the whole country? Lagos, Anambra, up north Bolo and, you know, Yoruba, Southeast and all of that? How do you want to bring us together? That's the first question. The second question is the health system. Now, um, doctors just spoke about part of it. I, I'm a GP and I do ED part-time, emergency part-time. And I found out that since I got to Australia, it's difficult to die. You can get to live and alive, to be honest, as, as I was shocked, you know? On what you say, if I must say, maybe ten people gone and two people died. It is difficult to die, come back alive, provide a ward in or the ambulance box, alive. You will be alive, there's no way you can die, you know? Everything, all the resources to be put in place, you know? But when I was in Nigeria, I did my almarship in Lorien. You see all the, all the emergen... All the emergency people on the ground, you know, on the ground, and, you know, they, and they, and they're out, you know, they will just be, uh, they're just dying for life, and they just die there. No oxygen, no nothing. So I think we should have a structure whereby there can be a proper emergency. Nigeria up to now does not have a proper emergency. So if we do that, we need to keep ourselves alive. It's only keep ourselves alive that we can fight for this movement, and then we can make more youths, you know, to be alive. So I guess that's my question, because of our time, I wouldn't go too much into what I want to say about them yet.
Thank you very much, Doc. Number five. I say, oh, that, now that.
Oh, no.
Number here. Number five, please go to my five. Step forward, sir. Come that way, and I'll bounce you on the microphone. Yeah? Say, I don't like, picking safe, I never actually picking die here. I want, if you don't put a bottle for ten more, see if we wake up.
Uh, Mr. Shoray, it's, it's really nice to meet you, just like the last speaker. I didn't know much about you. I, I can say I wasn't so interested. But since you're here today, I said, let me come and see what happened. But I can tell you that I'm now a fan, uh, because I saw a few things. And I really wanted to take note of your current madness. You know, when you were talking, it was like a human being talking. You know, it wasn't like one high horse, it was like one of us talking, so I really wanted to keep to that. I also want to ask you maybe a very personal question. Uh, do you belong to a secret society? Uh, because when I look at you and look at every one of us here, it could have been any of us in a place. But I tell you, some of us have known that, uh, should I say it? Some of us have other courages. So what, what is behind? You know, are you seeing Shoray or something will come up later? I hope I'm not being frank with you, and that's why I'm a fan, because I see someone that could do some things, but some of us could not do it. And I also want to say that no money in system is more important than a person. So how do you intend to surround yourself with the right people? Because we are seeing Shoray now, telling us and being grounded. Well, how, when you come up power, who are we going to see, you know? So if you could handle those questions, I have a few, but I'll give other people a chance. Thank you very much.
Put your hands together, Mr. Hefren. And you've got three questions to answer now? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Uh, the first question is about how to tackle the mentality of, uh, young people. And I think, uh, Dr. Sulari mentioned that the mind of our people. How do we take hold of the Nigerian human mind or Nigerian mind, such that it is not messed up, uh, at a young age? And that's what the question, the first person was talking about students. And I think, one of the things that I've always, always, uh, known, was I've been growing up, our education system was better, even though we didn't have fancy schools, because we had mentors. We had people who came around when I was in primary school, who were described as people of great character. And they'll come talk to us, and live, and we would be aspiring to become like them. But today, Nigeria, the value system has changed 360 degrees. If you grew up, and the only person who made it in your village is a thief, and is the one who know the nicest cars, even the people who are punished go to him to ask him to pay the scoops of their children, who would you want to grow up like? Is a thief. So, and it's a country in which we do not business consequences on this who do wrong. We praise them, right? We go to parties and praise them. You know, singers, we sing their praises, even when we do their kidnappers, their teachers, their robbers. Just like, uh, uh, Doctor Sulari was saying about Obasanjo. He came here and everybody started frustrating him. It's the same thing I was, I faced when I arrived in Nigeria to start campaigning. Everybody's like, what are you going to go see Obasanjo? What are you going to go see Obasanjo? And I keep asking them, wait, Obasanjo? Why would I, why should I go see Obasanjo? The same Obasanjo that prevented a woman from becoming president in 1979, through two twelve, twelve to twelve is what they dreamt of at that time. It's the same, Obasanjo that said that, I realize it's not the Messiah, I fought against him until they killed him. Same Obasanjo that was given a chance to run Nigeria for two consecutive times, and said he was not satisfied, he won't get a third term. When they drove him out of his third term agenda, he went and brought a dead person to run Nigeria. I said, why would I go to his house? It's because the Nigerian mind has been so colonized, that as Jerry Rollins said when I met him in Ghana, the former president of Ghana, he said, the problem with Nigerians is that they are still involved with their oppressors. And until you separate them from their oppressors, until they start hitting their oppressors, it's as if they have no future. So, I think when people see consequences against those who do wrong in society, in human mind, a student, a young person will start understanding that they have to live exemplary life. Right now, there's no basis for a person to live an exemplary life in Nigeria, because criminals are the ones who are venerated in the country, they are the ones who get the most respect. You go to Lagos, Lagos is owned by one person, Jagabah. Yes, you go to KwaZulu State, it's owned by one family, the Saraki family. So, it's, it's, sometimes you start wondering, again, like I started, at what point did we sell our bat rights and how much? That's the question. Uh, number, several question is, what structure to tackle Gokul Aram? It's a general question, I get this all the time. Uh, or how do we bring people together? I'm telling you, bringing people together is not difficult, but they have to be done through justice. The question is to ask yourself, who is this in Australia that bring you together? Is there any day that I get a letter from the government of Australia that say, please, so, we want you to come together, we want you to love the country? No. What makes you love Australia, for those of you who have changed your citizenship, is because Australia delivers to you social and economic justice. When you walk, you get paid. On weekends, in the US that I lived in, you know, uh, for nineteen years, if we don't get paid, it's like the world will come to an end on a big day. But we are waiting for that cheque to take you to the check, to the cashing place, when I started there. You cannot even imagine not getting paid, it's unimaginable. But in Nigeria, it is a surprise to get paid, you know, at the end of the month. You, you wonder why you get paid, what happens, that the governor releases money. There are governors who are owing sixteen months of salaries to their workers, and what they are owing is eighteen thousand naira per month. That same eighteen thousand naira translates in less than six hundred dollars per year, minimum wage in Nigeria. Here in Australia, I heard that in two weeks, people who are unemployed gets six hundred dollars every two weeks. That is more than the salary of a worker in a year in Nigeria. So, why would there not be unity when things are working? When we sang Nigerian National Anthem and Australian National Anthem, I see this zeal with which people were singing like, you're still young, you're still young. Nigerian one, people are just like, let it finish, let it finish, let it finish. But Australian one, I saw how it's good, you know? It was like, something like that, it might sound funny to you. A country that doesn't believe in you, you can't believe in that country. But if a country is taking care of you, even if you're near the National Anthem, you're still, you'll stand up. But the Nigerian National Anthem, I beg, don't try that in the front of some people here. There are parts of Nigeria where if you go and play National Anthem, they will beat you up. Because the country is not serving in any, in any capacity. I can't help but laugh at the question because someone said it's difficult to die here. But it's real, right? Because all it takes you whenever you are sick in this part of the world is to get to hospital, or for hospital to get to you. Yes. One day, in the US, my son, I was vetting my son, what, and he had seizure. And we thought he was gone, we just laid him on the, on the table, and it was snow, and we tried to drive out of the house with him, the snow blocked our car. The ambulance came, and the ambulance guy came down, the major one of them, one of the aids, hooked him up with this, and he said, oh, I found a corpse. And after he said he found a corpse, he said, boy, you should stop crying, he's still alive. In Nigeria, there's no way you can find that corpse. You know? Because the person is coming, it's not coming with first aid. You know? There's no way an ambulance will come to your house to pick up somebody to go to hospital in Nigeria. I've never heard it before. When people have accidents in Nigeria, our humanity are so strict that they'll be looking in their pocket for their cell phone. They collect it first, yes, that's the first priority for most people. Collect their cell phone, wallet, then they will see who is still alive, and say, okay, they'll help you stop the vehicle, take it to the hospital. But most of the time, you get to the hospital, there are no doctors there. You know, or when you get to the doctor, the doctors are even wondering, why is that, you have not died? Before you go there, you look at them and say this one, if we are still alive, this means you just end your mission, die. Nigeria is the only place on Sunday where churches are praying for people to die, 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 die. You know, invoking fire. And there are no firefighters in the country. It is part of the way the mind is set up. Somebody said beside me here when you said that people are, it's very hard to die, said, I know witches and wizards here in Australia. What happened to the Nigerian witches who came to Australia? Why do you believe in witches and wizards? Is it only the people without witch, who are not witches who got wizards? So many of you, before you came here, you were regarded as witches because you are poor. You were regarded as witches because you are sick. You were regarded as witches because you didn't pass exams. Every time you want to look for a job and you didn't get a job, you always start suspecting your sister, or your grandmother, or the village people. I know people who don't go to the village because they believe that all the villages are made up of witches and wizards. When I took my kids to Nigeria, the first night, everyone is like, you better take them out of the village. I said, for what? Ah, you know witches are hell. I said, the worst witches are based in America. If they don't kill them, there's nothing they can do to them. Oh, but they are not witches anywhere, they're not wizards everywhere. But when you don't have hospitals, what do you expect? What they are saying is that if my kids get sick in the village, practically, there's no hospital that I can take care of, no. I said, we fly them out of the country before we get to the airport, they'll probably be dead. So, trust me, we just have to take it back. We have to take that country back. And the moment we do that, we, we will kiss all the witches and wizards goodbye. The witches and wizards will also be dancing shakshak. Because there's a correlation between lack of electricity and witches and wizards. The more there's electricity, there's no witches that have been in Nigeria before, they go to the village and darkness. Secret societies, somebody asked me a very interesting question, I love the secret society. It's very, very interesting, because when I was at the university, uh, one of my biggest challenges was being a civilian in Nigeria, at the University of Lagos. And we had problem of secret societies, court gangs, as we always call the secret courts. And we had to fight them. We had to fight them, and when we were fighting on campus, I was asked the same question, where did you get the courage from to confront secret courts? Are you a secret court yourself? And my question was very easy. Is that if somebody had courage, you wouldn't need to be a member of a secret society? Yes. If you are brave enough, it's people who are not brave who need to join. It's people who are not brave who need to join hands in secret with some people to fight. But if you are brave enough, you don't need to act in secrecy. I can say, the way I am now, and is the way I've always been since I got to the university in 1989. The way I am now was the way I was when I was behind Abdullah in 1993. The reason I was behind Abdullah in that video, I'll tell you today. Abdullah gathered all these politicians behind him, they were collecting money from him. So I went to see him to tell him that students are going to fight their amendment on June 12. As usual, Abdullah stammered and said, ah, student leader, thank you for coming. He grabbed 800,000 naira. Bam. You know, the man is always giving out money. And I told him, I said, chief, what for? He said, for people to go and keep fighting against Babagida now. I said, chief, I'm not here to collect your money. I'm not fighting Babagida because of you, I'm fighting Babagida because of my own future. And you don't need to bribe me to fight for my own future. So Abdullah was shocked, you know, because I was wearing sneakers. He says, what kind of person are you that is not asked for money? And when I gave you, you did not collect. He said, come, come next to me, I'm going to address the media outside. I want you to be the person standing next to me. At that point, most of the politicians that collected money from you had abandoned Abdullah and went to Babagida to be collecting money. That was the history of why I was standing behind Abdullah in 1993. In 1993, I was 21 years old. Yes, about 21, 22. Today, I'm 47 years old and still standing on the same pedestal of what is right for Nigeria. And also reducing, reducing to the bribes by people who have stolen Nigeria's money. If I wanted to make money with Sahari waters, I would have made so much money, I would have bought an iron plant very close to Australia and living there by myself. Because each time I wrote a story against the rich people, the first attitude is, what do you want? And when I tell them that you cannot afford what I want, they look at me and say, there's nobody we cannot bribe now. We have bribed this, but they will name all the journalists and how they bribed them. But I said, there has to be one person that you cannot bribe, and that would be me. That's been where I stood. To answer your question, I did not belong to any secret society. And I have lived my life very transparently. Included in this presidential campaign, I'm raising money transparently. As of today on GoFundMe, I saw that we raised 89,000 dollars. Yes. Our goal is to raise 2 million dollars. Not Canadian dollars or not Australian dollars, US dollars. But I heard US dollars are stronger than Nigeria. Australian dollars, 2 million US dollars. With which we can defeat this old guard. And we are well on our way to raising that money, and I'm sure we will reach that destination. Whichever way it is, we are getting this opportunity that we never thought would come our way. The other day, when Melbourne, a doctor who came and said, never also believed in me before now, he thought I was working for Amichie, until he watched a video on YouTube and saw that I fought Amichie before and recorded it. He gave me 1,000 dollars, right there, American dollars. We know that a lot of you who can afford to form this revolution. So you are not convinced yourself that you won't succeed. But for me, and I want to be very clear, it's not about money. You can have all the money in March and still not win the election. But you have all the year that you need to defeat this in this election, even when you don't have dollars anymore. So that's what I tell you. So most secrets in my life, I do not believe in secret societies. I don't believe we need to blend in secrets. The countries that are doing well are countries that are doing things transparently. And the governments that will bring next year a way of going that is completely transparent, I intend to declare my assets. I intend to make sure that anybody who's working in my company, they are set as a player that are put there on the website, on the internet or on a special website that is accessible anywhere. I intend, when we recover money from chiefs, and we make them available to the public to know, who will recover the money in our own country. Those are things that when Harry Clinton would do when he came to power, he never did any more of them. See, today, they claim they are recovering money, you don't know from whom they recover the money, how they recover. They just tell us they are recovering money. We go back 320 million naira, a bunch of these are our assets. The days you want your life, you went to China to borrow 320 million naira. You know, these guys are not only wicked, they are also idiots, I'm sorry to say.
So let's take the next three questions. Number six and seven and eight, get ready.
Alright. So please let's see the part. I would say that being a fan since 2006, I've been following Sahari waters. And I always like to watch Dr. Davi's program on YouTube. And my question is, there's so much confusion in the land right now, in Nigeria right now. Because people don't, people are really confused. Some people just want to get somebody a candidate that will challenge, yeah, the present government, the president. And because of that, they are going for article, which I think so many of my friends, so many of my colleagues, which have come in, are getting articulated every day, which is a big concern. I just want to probably say this, that I just discovered that there are two categories of people. People that are running to churches, religious organizations for safety, just because it's an opus situation. And where you can find them is where you go to congregations, large congregations, you see them. You don't see them on the street, like they are really praying to God, they want up. Okay, and there are other people that are using music, because that's what is selling now, even abroad. Nigerian music industry is selling everywhere, so people are also using that to console themselves. So I will just, it's just like a suggestion and like a question, just to tell you that probably if you want to get people, a large number of people in a place, I'd like you to look into going to conventions, church, religious organization programs, like the Experience, the normal event, the first Friday of every December, where you can get organized by Paula DeFrasie. You can get a large number of youth there. And also, 6 billion people gathered in redemption camp every December. You can also get the villagers, the marketers, everybody there. Then my last, my last, sorry, sorry about that. My last question is about, if I remember. Yes, my last question is, what are you, what is your plan towards getting the BowDitA of Nigerians? Because there's no data in Nigeria, so what are your plans, what are you planning to do about that? Thank you very much.
Please, number eight, get ready.
Hi, my name is Amelia. So I've been to Nigeria once, and I found something quite eye-opening. Firstly, when I was there, I saw that the electricity wasn't working. And when I was at my grandmother's place, there was one day where we had three days without electricity. Like, it may not seem like a big deal, but not having electricity is kind of bad. And I was wondering what you and your party would do to make sure that electricity was working more efficiently and better for the people. And I also noticed that after 8pm, it was safe to leave your compound where your house was. And it was due to thieves or even the police around. How are you and your party going to combat police brutality and also protect the people of Nigeria?
This is a great honor for me, Mr. Shure. I first saw you on YouTube, and it was like I was dreaming. Is this for real? Is this really a candidate that really loves Nigeria to this extent? And you've shown your love by coming to Australia. We are very far away down on there. And if you don't love us, if you don't love Nigeria, you would not have come here. So I just want to appreciate that. My name is Dr. Mrs. Motaruyadebey. I have a few questions here, I hope I don't run out of time. The first thing is the mind. Someone has rightly said here that the mind, even the devil uses our mind to conquer us. There is fear. So the mind and fear prevents us from doing what we should do. What is your strategy to win? When Israelites got to the border and they're supposed to enter the promised land, fear prevented them from entering the promised land. They were afraid of giants, giants that God could...